It is 5:06 and we are recording.
All right, we'll call this planning or work session for the Planning Commission, January 6th, to order. And roll call, Commissioner Jacobs here. We have Commissioner, I'm sorry, all right, Commissioner Brummond.
Here.
Commissioner Lanterman.
Here.
Commissioner Shalak.
Here.
And Commissioner Van Neindt.
Van De Neindt.
Van De Neindt.
Here.
All right, everybody is in attendance. And we will have our work session, item A, staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we will just dive right into a PowerPoint compared to go over planning basics. And I need to get them to you. There we go. So we'll start from the very beginning. The historical basis for planning actually stems from the Black Plague in Europe. During this time, a quarter of the population was lost due to dank and crowded living conditions that were a direct result of how the city and buildings were built as it contributed to indiscriminate spread of the plague. So as a result, England implemented rules that all living units needed access to light and air, and as well as animals being separated from human living spaces. So this is the first time that we see some kind of government regulation that determines how we're going to build, and it also is the first time that we're seeing some kind of separation of uses. Another significant historical event was the Industrial Revolution. During this time, residential spaces were intermixed with industrial spaces. People started to become very sick and died as a result of the air pollution. And so as a solution, we started zoning to keep residential uses separated from industry. So in the U.S., we have a constitutional basis for planning. The U.S. Constitution grant states the general right for police powers, meaning the ability to limit an individual's rights for the interests of the community. Key constitutional principles that come up during planning are due process. So we have substantive due process, meaning we need, as a government, need to have a rational basis for our regulations. And then we have procedural due process, meaning we need to follow a prescribed process. This is where our public notices, our public hearings come into play. We also have to be mindful of equal protection. Basically, you want to treat everyone the same, especially when we're talking about the same zoning district. We can't favor one business over another. We can't favor one property over another. We can regulate what kind of uses go into a district, but among those uses, we can't favor one over the other if it's same class. And then we also have the concept of takings. The taking of property for public use requires just compensation. We have a few notable exceptions that come up, such as required dedication of a public right-of-way or road, and this is allowed generally because it's a basic requirement to serve properties within a subdivision. We also are allowed to take parks and park dedication within a subdivision because it applies to everyone equally. Zoning regulations that are not supported by rationale are not, and are found to be unnecessary, can become a taking. So a front yard setback of 100 feet that has no basis, no record of fact, that could be found to be a taking, especially compared to a general setback that of 20 to 30 feet, which you generally do see. So you want to make sure you have a rational basis for zoning regulations and that you're treating people fairly, reasonably, and equally, without putting a burden on property owners beyond the government interest. So then, just a quick timeline for basically how we got to where we are today. The first land uses were established as public health laws in England. Prior to 1916, we depended on, we were dependent on nuisance loss to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. In 1916, you start to see the establish of early, establishment of early zoning laws. And around this time, New York City was the first city to adopt a comprehensive zoning ordinance. In 1922, you see the first version of the Standard State Zoning Enabling Act. 1923, by 1923, 208 U.S. communities had adopted a zoning ordinance. And in 1926, I'm going, this is a big hint for our Jeopardy! game later, in 1926, the U.S. Supreme Court upheld the use of zoning as a police power in the case Village of Euclid versus Ambler Realty.
What was the, what was the gist of the case?
Um, you know, I don't know that off the top of my head. I believe, I have it in my notes somewhere, but I just simply don't have it on the top.
I mean, you got the Village of Euclid, which I would assume would be like the City of Corcoran versus Ambler Realty, which might be a developer.
Yeah, so it's probably trying to say that we didn't have, we didn't, as a government unit, didn't have the right to zone, and the U.S. Supreme Court upheld our right to zone as a, as a state, and usually states have enabling legislation that delegates this power to cities.
Okay, but use of zoning as a police power. So now, the mayor just sent us the proposed legislation that is being, you know, looked at in our state government, and I question, then, did this case say that it was the government? I mean, so I look at it as, will we see another case then whereby? The question is, does the Met Council have the police power in regulating zoning that would supersede that of the City of Corcoran itself?
Phenomenal question.
So, Mr. Chair, I understand that's a very, I couldn't tell you what the ruling would be on something like that. And I do want to add, we do have a part in the agenda for questions. We have very limited time, and this is a 45-minute.
No, I get that, that's okay.
I don't, at the same time, I know, basically, the gist is police powers is what gives us the ability to zone, and the state is able to delegate that process, and this was upheld in this case.
Okay. All I can say is Alex Trebek would have known the answer.
I am not Alex Trebek.
Good question.
Next slide. So then, why do we plan? The planning process helps us evaluate as a community our past, as well as provide a vision for our future. Through planning, we can anticipate how to protect our character, our resources, drive economic development, provide cost-effective services, participate in intergovernmental cooperation and coordination, and then balance community interests with private rights. So then, the enabling legislation, as I was talking about, the state delegates the police power for zoning to local government units, and there are a few Minnesota statutes that provide this. The ones most applicable to us are the first two listed here, because we are within the metropolitan area, and I think that goes to the Met Council, and then the Minnesota statute that gives it to all municipalities. And next slide. So our comprehensive plan, our zoning ordinance and our subdivision ordinance comprise what we call our guiding documents. These are, the enabling legislation in Minnesota requires that our planning process begins with an analysis of community needs and goals that are used to formulate a comprehensive plan. A comprehensive plan does not necessarily need to be 500 pages. Some smaller communities have maybe just a couple pages, but as the city becomes more complicated and has more vision, it, these documents can get very large. Comprehensive plan will then act as the guiding policy for our community development, the zoning ordinance, and other land use regulations. And our zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance are tools to implement our comp plan. So the supportive rationale of the zoning ordinance should be provided by the information within our comprehensive plan, and then regulations must be a reasonable means to meet legal ends or the governmental interest. Next slide. So our zoning ordinance specifically regulates our private property by establishing standards of development for individual lots, the use of land and buildings within our community. This works closely and in conjunction with our zoning map. We use the zoning ordinance to determine and classify different uses. So we have allowed uses, which are by right, really is no questions asked, conditions cannot be applied if it is allowed use. And then we have an accessory use. These uses can typically be allowed. Sometimes a conditional use permit might be, might be required. But what makes them accessory is they cannot exist by themselves. They have to have a principal use first before an accessory use could be allowed.
Can I, can I ask you to repeat something? You said "by right," and then you went on from there. Can you?
Yes, so allowed by right, like, allowed by right is basically how we say, a single-family home is allowed by right. We don't have any, there's no conditions we can apply. They are allowed by right to do that.
Okay, so then, there's no discretion, there's nothing, it's by right.
Correct.
They ask for it, and I'm asking because that's going to be an issue in our meeting later on, so I'm just looking for some clarification. So by right means, there's no oversight, no discretion that the city council can claim.
Correct.
You, you get it no matter what, as, just, as a matter of law.
If it meets our standards, then yes, it is by right allowed.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, and a conditional use is still an allowed use. However, we anticipate that there will be additional stipulations that may need to be added to ensure it is compatible with the surrounding area. So there is some discretion with this, and there's a later slide that talks about some of our discretion ability. And then interim is, uses are similar to condition. They can be approved for a limited amount of time, so it's supposed to be a temporary use. Finally, our zoning ordinance also provides bulk and area regulations. This is where you'll see the height limits, setbacks, and other, other caveats such as lot coverage or impermeable surface limits. Next slide. Our subdivision ordinance ensures new development and redevelopment meets standards for a safe, functional, and enjoyable community. It establishes the procedures for land division that is consistent with our comprehensive plan. Subdivision in its broadest meaning is basically the division of a parcel of land. So you, it could be a division into two parcels, it could be a division into 40 parcels. Generally, you will see a plat as a result of a subdivision, although there are some exceptions to this, such as technically a minor subdivision, or the state does have a process where a large enough parcel can be split into two without having any overview from the city. Next slide. And then we have the role of planning staff, and we'll also discuss all of our roles. So my role as your staff planner is to interpret and administer our land use regulations as they are written in city code today. I review and coordinate review of land use applications, and when I say coordinate, that means I'm, I'm working with the applicant, I'm working with public works, the city attorney, and as well as our planning consultant Kendra in Landform. We, I regularly meet with developers, property owners, and residents to discuss ongoing projects, as well as how the code may apply to their own projects. I prepare staff reports to inform and advise you, as well as the city council, research planning and land use issues. I work on long-range plans and special projects. One specifically right now is the Northeast District Corridor Planning. I maintain city records, and there are state laws that I have to abide by with the city records, so that is a huge part of my role. And I provide continuity in terms of consistency, as well as institutional knowledge that I'm able to use when I educate and assist in the public. And another way to look at it is I'm the voice of planning at City Hall. Next slide. And then we have the role of planning consultants, which is Kendra and Landform at this time, very similar role to planning staff. She's able to do basically everything that I do, if not more, because she also can provide services that the city may not have easy access to, such as additional staffing at a moment's notice, and software that we don't have access to. So, but one important caveat is she does serve at the pleasure and direction of city council while working closely to coordinate land use items with city staff, and this informs the recommendation to council.
What software don't you have access to?
Several. We had to hold questions, so others, I'm not going.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But there's several, there's several pieces of software I don't have access to at this time that is not financially feasible, at this time anyways. They do provide their professional advice and insight based on experience with working for other cities, as well as developers. And the City of Corcoran does not allow our planning consultant or firm to submit a land use application on behalf of a developer for a property within Corcoran. This is not true of all cities, but it is a specific exclusion in her contract at this time. And then we have the role of you guys, the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission is created based on the presumption that residents are in the best position to objectively review land use requests and recommend regulations. You mostly act as a quasi judicial body, making recommendations to council, interpreting and applying the ordinances. However, you do have some legislative, legislative role as well when we're recommending zoning ordinance changes, for example. The planning commissioners are expected to interpret and apply written codes and ordinances and remain as objective as possible. This is a pyramid of discretion I mentioned earlier. If you start at the bottom with the green, the most discretion we have as the Planning Commission, as the city, is within the comprehensive plan and our zoning and subdivision ordinances. We don't have complete discretion, as there are times where city, I'm sorry, county or state law does have some guidelines, or not guidelines, but regulations that we have to follow or meet minimum standards. But this is where we do have the most ability to create what it is that we want in our community. And then when we get into applications, such as subdivision applications, conditional use permits and variances, we do still have discretion. However, we're mostly applying what we've established in our guiding policies. I would actually say variances are somewhere between the green and the yellow, because the city is not obligated to approve variances. The applicant does have the burden of proof that they have some kind of hardship, but generally speaking, as a city, we have been sympathetic to property owners who are looking to get some kind of relief from the zoning code. Conditional use permits, generally, we do have some discretion, especially in applying different conditions, or saying that it simply doesn't fit within a given area. The least amount of discretion we have is within our site plan reviews, which is something the Planning Commission does see, I'm sorry, the city council does see, okay. And then the building permits, which are administered by staff. These simply are, if they meet the standards, they must be approved.
Can I ask just one question on that pyramid? So when it comes to the, the bottom one, the comprehensive plan, in that we are specifically talking about the 500-page, $10,000 document we give as a requirement to the, to the Met Council? Is that exactly what we're talking about? Or if, if the Met Council didn't exist, and we had no requirement to submit a massive document to somebody, what would, what would be in place of that?
It's still, other cities that aren't in the metropolitan area still have a comprehensive plan per the enabling statute, but it could be as simple as a few pages.
Okay, because I don't find that, quite honestly, and I've been through a number of them, I, we can always dream a lot, but that comprehensive plan where we can create, I'll give you that, but everything that we do in there is pretty much dictated by the Met Council.
And again, there are other.
Our densities, our road plans, our park plans, our, our lot sizes, our, everything is dictated by the Met Council. So how, how is that the, the biggest opportunity for us to decide our own path?
That is where we have the most discretion. It is not that we have complete discretion.
Okay, all right.
Because we do have other rules to abide by, but we could, at one point, have decided that we did not want sewer and water, and that would have changed the density requirements if we didn't want any municipal services on the east.
What if we just said to the Met Council, we wrote a letter, because, I don't know, maybe someday I'll run for mayor and this will be my platform, we just say, you know, we want out of the Met Council. We don't want to do it.
Lake Elmo did that, and it didn't go very far, well for them.
Who did?
I'm sorry. Lake Elmo, we could talk separately at a different training session, said the same thing. We don't think we should have to provide sewer and water, and it went to court, and they do have a comp plan and they are providing sewer and water, so.
But a city could always do their own sewer and water, couldn't they?
No, not in the seven-county metro area. And it's a complicated issue, probably outside of tonight, but certainly happy, I'm sure, to have Natalie chat with you offline.
You know, maybe we could offer to just set aside 25% of the project for green space.
Well, green space, if it qualifies, it gets a tax exemption.
Okay, so I have 15 minutes and like 20 slides to go, so I gotta go, and I'm sorry. The comprehensive plan amendment is an application type that will probably come in front of you at one point or another, if it hasn't already, for those that have been on the commission for a while. Basically, this is a request either from, it might be staff-driven, I believe we had one actually with our Southeast District when we were trying to correct some inconsistencies, or it can be from a property owner within the city who wants to possibly re-guide their property. But it's basically a change to our comprehensive plan amendment so that they can most likely rezone, is kind of what I see it most common as. So basically, when you're looking at a comprehensive plan amendment application, you'll want to consider criteria such as the consistency with the overall goals and objections of the comp plan, the impact on public services, such as roads and water supply, the potential for resulting development to create an undue impact on nearby properties, and then the development should fit the physical character of the neighborhood or improve the viability of the neighborhood. It shouldn't be detrimental. Then we have the zoning ordinance amendments. There are two types. We have map amendments, which change the districts of a boundary, and then we have text amendments, which actually changes the land use regulations, such as allowed uses or setbacks. This is a legislative decision, as is our comprehensive plan amendment process, but with the zoning ordinance amendment, it must be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So we have to, if it's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, we either deny it or we have to go back and amend our comprehensive plan. And again, it should not have a detrimental impact to the neighborhood, the environment, or our ability as a city to provide services. So rezoning is basically another word to use for a land, or for the zoning map amendment, the zoning ordinance amendment for maps. And again, we talked about the fact that you would have, if it's inconsistent with our future land use map and our comprehensive plan, then we have to go back and adjust that first before we could approve a rezoning request. Generally, we may want to do this if we agree as a city that the location is appropriate and beneficial for the requested change in use. We do want to avoid spot zoning as a city, and this is kind of a hard concept to explain. The idea is you don't want to zone a single piece of property out of context with its surroundings. Now, you could have neighborhood commercial appropriately placed at the intersection of two major roads, even if it's surrounded by residential. What you would want to avoid is, in the middle of a residential subdivision, rezoning a single parcel to all of a sudden allow for a commercial use, such as a gas station. So that's probably the easiest way to explain it, but it's definitely simplifying the situation. Most common application type at this point is our preliminary and final plats. Plats generally should be approved if they meet our minimum requirements, but they can be conditioned on compliance with items contained in our guiding policies that are in place at the time of the submittal of the application, provisions of public improvements or financial guarantees, and the satisfaction of objections or other regulations raised by other agencies. With preliminary plat, we're looking at a, basically a proposal. It's a little more flexible. It's not the final plan, it's just to show us what is existing, what they would like to do. It's a fairly final plan, it's not something that they're taking lightly, but there is room for some change. This is where we have the public hearing, and this is where the Planning Commission and city council review. There is a 60-day review period that applies, but this is the one application type where the city can extend, and often does extend, to 120 days for significant discussion to go into these preliminary plans. The final plat is where we're seeing the final, the final proposal, and it really can't deviate from there without a significant, coming back for a change in approval with the city. With this one, there is a 60-day review period, it just goes to the city council. Some cities do that differently, but in Corcoran, it goes to city council as required by state statute, and we are not able to review, extend the review period without an extension request from the applicant for this type of application. And then we have our site plan reviews. This is simply a review of a proposed project's design on a single parcel. In Corcoran, our city code requires site plan reviews for all developments other than agricultural uses or single and two-family homes. When you guys have any interest in reviewing a site plan review, then that would, review elements that you would want to look at are consistency with comprehensive, our guiding policies, relationships to nearby uses, the location and dimensions of buildings, proposed grading and contours, screening and landscaping, utilities, parking and access, lighting and signage. This, a very helpful checklist even for myself in terms of what am I looking at, what am I looking for? These would be the elements that you would want to review it by. Conditional use permits are in anticipated and allowed use within the zoning ordinance, but conditions may need to be added for compatibility. Common conditions, such as buffers and screening, can make the use more compatible, but the use simply may not be appropriate in areas where these conditions can't be met, so that's why the city has identified it as a conditional use. So with CUPs, we cannot attach a time limit. Once it is approved, it runs with the land regardless of any change of ownership, and the only way we can revoke the permit is if a condition of approval is violated. And conditions must be reasonable and directly related to the use.
Could I ask a very quick question? I believe on the March 25th work session, the PUD ordinance was identified as the number one priority of city council. Is that still correct?
The March 20? The last year. It was one of the top four priorities, I believe.
I think it was identified as the number one priority.
Well, they did set up a subcommittee that was supposed to start that immediately. I do know, I do recall that.
Okay, thank you.
So basically, a CUP should be approved when it is compatible with the existing neighborhood, conforms with our comp plan, does not present a danger to our public health, safety, and welfare as a community, and meets all other applicable standards within our zoning code. Interim use permits are essentially a CUP, but with a sunset clause. These are for temporary uses, and we have some kind of trigger, whether it be a specific date or event, such as change of ownership, that terminates the permit. Sometimes we, sometimes we review things in terms of, every couple of years, we, in our code, we have to review IUPs, and it gets extended, or a new owner can apply for the same permit, and we probably approve it, most likely, and if there's no other changes in the district. But there is some way for us to stop the use if we need to, as a city, move forward in a particular direction. Right now, we allow IUPs commonly for conditional home occupation licenses, accessory dwelling units, and temporary living quarters, as a few examples.
What's, what is that? Like, what's a conditional home occupation?
Conditional home occupation licenses.
Working out of the home, or?
Uh, some working out of the home. Uh, some working out of the home. There's, we have, we have allowed home occupations, we have special home occupations, which might have, like, customers are coming to the property.
Oh, like to get their hair cut.
Yeah, and conditional home occupation licenses, there's, there's some impact that's going to probably happen that we're trying to mitigate for.
And you'll have to just, so the accessory dwelling units, we just allowed one to be built, and I drove by that thing, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago. So you're telling me that, and I don't recall this point specifically, but I'm sure we talked about, so accessory dwelling units are something that expire? They're interim use?
Mm-hmm.
And they expire what, when Grandma and Grandpa no longer cease to live there?
No, so the biggest example, again, it's, all our IUPs, we have to review every couple of years to make sure they're meeting the conditions of approval. And so that would be potentially where it could get expired, if they're not meeting the conditions, such as an owner is not, because with the accessory dwelling unit, the owner of the property has to live in one of the units. So if we find that there are two rental properties essentially, then we could revoke that permit. Generally, the specific event that would trigger some kind of expiration is selling the property.
Okay, but what, what does that mean? So these, these people that built it, Grandma and Grandpa no longer live there, they just, the owners decided to move to Florida.
They would either just sit down.
You got two homes on that lot. So what, what do you, how do you, how do you expire an accessory dwelling unit?
You would need to, you would need to demolish the building, or the new property owner would need to come in immediately for some kind, or prior to the sale, or immediately afterwards to request that this be something that they can take over.
Correct. They need, if they sell the property, the new owner needs it, and it was very clear in our sunset clauses, Mr. Chair, but that's how it happens. That's certainly something that we could look at, but it is a sunset clause intentionally, because if the owner moves, the council wanted the ability to have the new, require the new landowner to come in and get a permit. They were not interested in rental property. So, we can talk about that specific one later, but again, I know Natalie, we are 10 minutes away, and we have 11 slides left.
Great, okay. So an IUP should be granted when the use conforms with our regulations, the use is temporary in nature, when we as a city will not incur additional costs as a result of the IUP, and the applicant agrees to all the conditions of approval. So for a variance, this is a zoning relief mechanism that approves a departure from the standard ordinance. Variance, variances may be granted when a practical difficulty is shown, but approval on the city's part is not required. And it is important to keep in mind that economic considerations alone do not constitute a practical difficulty. If the owner of the property can reasonably meet the zoning ordinance by spending additional money, that is not a practical difficulty. So use, it is important to note that use variances are not allowed in Minnesota, meaning if, in a residential district, we have allowed uses such as homes, we don't, and let's say for this example, we don't have any other allowed uses other than homes. We can't grant a variance to all of a sudden allow a bakery within a residential district. That doesn't have that as an approved use. A variance may set a precedent in very, very limited situations. Generally, we say that they don't set a precedent because we have to look at the merits of each application, and it's very rare that you're going to have a property that has the same set of facts applied. Theoretically, a precedent can be set if the property does have similar facts, and it is requested within the same timeframe, so within months of the original variance that was granted. Generally, once time has passed, the city would have some ability to say, no, we learned from that variance, we don't want to grant it again, or no, we're a different council, we don't want to grant this. So it would, it's very limited where a precedent could be established with a variance. Next slide. Criteria for review for the variance. Property should be used in a reasonable manner. There are circumstances unique to the property, not caused by the landowner or the predecessor. This is usually interpreted to include physical characteristics of the lot that create a constraint, such as wetlands, steep slopes, or odd shapes. The variance also should not alter essential character of the locality, and as a commission, you can recommend conditions to be applied in the event the variance is granted, but these conditions must be directly related to the impact created by the variance. Planned unit development. This is a rezoning request to review several buildings and/or uses as a single unit. The idea of the planned unit development is to promote creativity, negotiation, efficient use of land, flexibility, and a mix of land uses that may not otherwise be allowed. This is seen as, typically seen as useful when developers are looking at difficult sites with many natural resources, as preserving those natural resources can be part of the benefits to the city, as a PUD should be providing benefits to the city, not obtained through straight zoning. Another benefit that came up recently of planned unit development is, once it, once a property or a group of properties are zoned as a PUD, the city retains a significant amount of discretion should that area ever be redeveloped, because as a PUD, it would have to come back for approvals. And we don't necessarily have that with straight zoning.
When you say, the city retains authority.
Retains discretion.
Discretion on a PUD. So are you talking like if all of a sudden Tavares decides to fail, and?
No, so if Tavares.
And they're gonna bulldoze it down? I mean, what, what would, what would constitute a PUD failure that the city, that, give me an example?
Not really talking about a PUD failure, but if, if a situation where a developer came in and basically bought several lots and wanted to redevelop these homes, we, they would have to, whether they're talking about a slightly different use, slightly different group of use, or slightly different design standards, they would have to come into the city for any kind of approval. This is, come in as a PUD amendment, and we've already seen that, where we've had Tavares come in for simply putting up a different type of sign, they needed to come in for a PUD amendment. We retain a lot of discretion in how it gets developed going forward, that we don't necessarily get with straight zoning.
Gotcha. Thank you.
The procedure to recommend approval of a PUD, I know we got, kind of hung up on this the last time it came in front of us, I wanted to try to see if I could explain it a bit better this time. The, when we are approving a PUD, we start with the ordinance to rezone the parcel to a PUD designation. This establishes the boundary of the PUD, the district boundaries on our zoning map. From there, we have a resolution that approves the finding of fact that justifies this rezoning. This is our, our record of evidence that we're able to point to. Then, once we have the PUD boundary established, we can approve a resolution that, of the preliminary PUD development plan, which provides the conditions specific to that district. And once we have the conditions that apply to that district, we can approve a preliminary plat that meets those conditions. So that's why we do it in that order, or we can technically approve it all at once if we so choose. So then we go into our procedures. As a city, we loosely follow Robert's Rules of Order, otherwise known as parliamentary procedure. We also are required to follow by open meeting laws. In other words, we must be open to the public when we're making decisions and discussing facts of the case. And we also must comply with the 60-day rule. This is a rule that applies to all land use requests, general, that we went over, the CUPs and variances, and the only exception that we have as a city is, again, that preliminary plat where we can extend to 120 days. Otherwise, the applicant has to request.
And that's from the day it's, it's filed?
That is, yeah, from the day the complete application is submitted to the city.
It has, okay.
So in the hopes of efficient meeting practices, I believe we are in a kind of a transition period where we had done a process based on the fact that we were doing Zoom meetings, and now we're doing in-person meetings, so I think we can move back to a process that we were utilizing before. So basically, when we have an agenda item in front of us, the chair should announce and clearly state the subject. We do our staff presentation, we hold the public hearing, and once the public hearing is closed, the chair can go ahead and invite a motion on the item, and invite a second to the motion. Once that is ready to go, then anyone that wants to speak, whether it's asking questions, debating, they can go ahead and raise their hand to be requested to, request the chair to recognize them, and they have the floor. Commissioners that do not want to speak, or do not have anything additional to add, are not required to speak. We do not need to go around twice to make sure everyone had a chance to speak. It should be recognized that planning commissioners that want to speak can notify the chair and go from there. So once we have everyone who wants to speak, has had the floor, the chair can repeat the motion and call for a vote. And then the chair will announce the results of the vote, whether or not the motion fails or passes, carries.
So, if you don't mind me saying, so in, in the way our agenda's put out, staff report, open public hearing, closed public hearing, commission discussion and recommendation. Are you suggesting that we should eliminate number four, commission discussion and recommendation?
No, I'm saying, go ahead and make some.
And go straight to a vote?
No, not, no. What I said is, we want to go ahead and get a motion on the floor for us to discuss. And then, once the, once the discussion and debate is complete amongst the commissioners, we go to a vote. But no, I definitely encourage discussion and debate and questions, for clarification. It's just, it's helpful for organization to have a motion on the floor to discuss. Then we have legally defensible decisions. As a commission, we want to make sure that we are able to stand by the decisions that we came to. So it's important that we understand the subject matter jurisdiction. Did we as a body decide a matter that we are empowered to, by statute or ordinance, to act on? So for example, the Parks Commission is able to make recommendations on park dedication. That is generally not something that's in our purview as a commission. So we want to focus on the application in front of us, not a hypothetical situation. So that's kind of where the subject matter decision's coming from. Then we have use of proper procedures. Did we have, did we follow open meeting law? Did we post a public notice, which is my job? Did we hold the public hearing? Do we have a record of decision to point to? And proper standards, meaning did we apply proper standards in making the decision, such as what we have written in our code for rezoning and CUPs and plat review. We basically want to be able to point back to ordinance and zoning standards. Do we have a rational basis for the decision? Could a reasonable person have reached this conclusion? And then evidence in the record. Do facts in the record of the proceedings support our decision? Is there a logical conclusion? As commissioners, it is important to avoid advocating, oh, I'm sorry, I missed something. The one case I wanted to point to was Hoyt et al. versus City of Minneapolis. This was a situation where basically a planning commissioner, not planning commissioner, but a city council member had made a decision prior to the public hearing and was advocating for, against the application, and so the city ended up being sued. And there are several lessons that we should keep in mind. Basically, that as planning commissioners, and the same goes for city council members, you do not want to have your mind made up prior to the public hearing. You want to be open to the evidence that can, that is presented at the hearing. You do not want to advocate for or against an application before a public hearing, and you want to remain an impartial decision maker. And so then we can go on to, it's important to avoid, and again, or we do not want to advocate for a certain result. You want to avoid ex parte contacts, so that's contact between you all. I think, I don't know if you've noticed, but when I send out an agenda, you're all blind and c-c'd, so that you don't, can't easily do a reply all by mistake, which could count as a ex parte contact. Then you want to avoid discussing projects in meetings on social media.
Could I, I don't think that the ex parte contact law means between two, you know, certainly you have to be mindful of public meeting laws, but I think that, that, that the law you're referring to, ex parte refers to if a member of this commission were to reach out to an applicant. Not, if I, if I, I don't believe that, that what you're referring to is, if Dean, if, if the chairperson calls me and say, hey, you going to the meeting to, hey, you know, I don't understand there, what do you mean about this? We're not convening a meeting outside of the public. That's not what the ex parte is referring to. It's referring to a member of this commission reaching out to an applicant.
Yeah, that is not my understanding. But yeah, my understanding is ex parte communications are discussions between decision makers beyond the quasi judicial hearing. Or members are required to base their decision on evidence presented during the hearing.
Right.
Relying on.
That's true.
Yeah, relying on information provided elsewhere could violate due process rights. Fundamental fairness dictates that all parties are informed of all facts. In, in the real world, ex parte communications happen, but we would need to disclose something like that happens. So it might not be, I think it's kind of the idea of a quorum, we have to notice when there's going to be a quorum.
If there's a quorum, but one-on-one is not a quorum.
Right, so you could speak to one other person, but if, but if Chair Jacobs has already spoken to Commissioner Brummond on an item, then he would be very careful about speaking it with somebody else.
That's correct.
So, so you're right, maybe it's, I'm simplifying it because I'm running out of time.
No, no, I get that, but I think it's important to clarify this. So I, I'd like an opinion from the city attorney on that, because am I allowed to just call any applicant before the hearing and say, hey, you know, tell me about this project? I don't think I can do that. And I think that that's what ex parte is referring to. If there is no quorum, there's no decision-making ability amongst this commission. So I.
And I've certainly, I've had applicants call and contact me.
Yeah, my understanding is one-on-one with an applicant to discuss questions on the application is.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that, I mean, that's something that I, that I've.
Yeah, you've promoted it in the past when.
Right, especially with, yeah, with a complicated application. But I can, I don't know if I can get a written opinion from the city attorney on this, but I could definitely check with him.
Yeah, I, I don't need that. I would just like some clarification on that.
Sure, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
And the other thing we want to avoid is conflicts of interest, which goes to our next slide. So what constitutes a conflict of interest? It's come up a few times in the last year where someone thought they may have a conflict of interest or otherwise. Basically, the Minnesota statute defines it as a public official who has the ability to make a decision as part of their official duties that would substantially affect their own or an associated business's financial interest. Another way to look at it is a public officer who has the ability to make a sale, lease, or contract in their official capacity, and could also voluntarily have a personal interest or financial benefit as a result of that transaction. A couple of examples, if a city council member votes on a city contract, and they are, would be able to receive compensation as a partner or shareholder of the other party to the contract. Another example that the city attorney actually provided to me yesterday was if the city goes, does an RFP for trash haulers, and a council member has a trash hauling business. Now, if that business doesn't decide to submit a bid to that RFP, there is no conflict of interest. However, if they do submit a bid, and now they have an incentive to work against the other bids, they would have a conflict of interest that must be disclosed, and they should abstain from the vote. Another exception for conflicts of interest to keep in mind, if you are a member of a business classification, profession, or occupation, and the action applies to all others in that same class or category, then you need not disclose a conflict, because there, it applies to everyone equally. You are not in violation of a conflict of interest in that situation.
Could I get some clarification? And I know you're running out of time, but I.
Yeah, we are out of time.
Yeah, I get that, but I think questions are more important than jeopardy. The statute reads, a public official or a local official elected to or appointed The statute reads, "A public official or a local official elected to or appointed by a metropolitan government." I'm not saying that's, you know, I'm not saying, you know, this is the case here, but does that statute also apply to city contract planners?
It applies to city staff, it applies to everyone.
So, it applies to vendors as well?
Yes, so, yeah, but yeah, basically, the difference here being a city contractor such as landform, they, they are beholden to the city through their contract. If they're not acting in the best interest of the city, they lose the contract. And really, what their contractual duty is, is to provide professional advice. They are not making a decision. They are, it's the city council that's ultimately making a decision.
Well, but there are recommendations being made to the city council.
There are recommendations in coordination with city staff. So, it's coordination with Public Works, the city attorney, it's not just her view alone.
Oh, of course.
So, it's, yeah, so it's very, it's, it's, there's a little bit of a separation into what they're talking about, a financial interest, they're more talking about the, the ability to, to gain or lose financially as a result of a contract the city is entering into or other transaction.
Okay, thank you.
And I think that's it. So, we've gone through a few questions. If we want to stick to the agenda, we could probably take questions until about 6:05 and so hopefully, but to let me know if there's other questions and maybe write answers on the line.
I had one, let me see if I can find it. Okay. Oh, under the variance application types, it said that the circumstances unique to the property are not caused by the landowner or the predecessor, and that referred specifically to wetlands. And I know that we do that, it's come up a few times, anyway. But why are wetlands the only designated area like of protection? Is it just because of the watershed?
So, I just want to clarify, the, I was just providing examples of physical constraints that could qualify for a variance.
So, others could also apply, not just specifically the-
Yeah, that's just one of the easiest ones to think of-
Sure, sure, because it comes up often.
That's very relevant, yeah. So, if there's so many wetlands on the property that basically the building pad that's left over is minimal and wouldn't meet our standards, and that is not the fault of the property owner or the previous property owner, it's not the fault of a develop, so maybe, maybe it's like one of our parcels that aren't planted right now-
Sure.
-and they're coming in and try to get a house permit, and it turns out most of it's wetlands.
Sure.
But they do have a development right of some sort, then a variance could reasonably be granted because they have no control over the location of the wetlands.
Okay, no, that's helpful. I didn't realize it was just examples and not exclusively.
Right, no, that is not exclusive. That, that was just to try to explain that generally speaking, when we say unique circumstance, we're not talking about-
Physical constraints.
Well, no, we are talking about physical characteristics of a site. We're not talking about a political situation where they should, like, because they hate their neighbor, they should be able to put up a fence.
Right, okay.
So, yeah.
Say on the application types, preliminary and final plats one, I was, so there wasn't anything in there about the preliminary plat about the number of proposed units and the difference in the final plat. Of course, we've all seen those numbers, especially with regard to lenarev, very drastically.
Yeah, proposed street and lot layout, and then we have a final plat, is the final street and lot layouts. I guess I had kind of considered that as part of the lot layout in terms of numbers, but yeah, they can, they're, the preliminary plat is to provide a much more general proposed idea, and then as things become more, as requirements are applied to the plat, then things sometimes need to get adjusted in the final plat, so that's why there might be some kind of discrepancy.
True.
And then finally, when we were talking about how you wouldn't put a bakery in the middle of a residential neighborhood, does that also apply then to agriculture? Like, because agriculture is not commercial and it is not residential, so does it have to stand on its own?
So, our rural residential allows for agricultural uses as a permitted right, so they kind of are able to do what they want to do unquestioned in the city. Now, as far as a agricultural farm in the middle of one of our urban zoning districts, that would, that is not an allowed use.
Okay. I was just wondering, because one of the suggestions made in the 25% preservation was for it to be utilized by a farmer.
Like a community, or yeah, or a community garden.
Right.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be a different situation. I don't think there's anything preventing community gardens, again, a garden, but as far as like a commercial farm.
It's not like you could rent that out to a land lease and somebody could come and grow alfalfa and then cut it, you, that is not what you're doing.
That is not currently allowed by our code.
Well, you can lease your land, like the land could be owned by someone and then a-
Yeah.
Sorry, okay.
No, 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 you're fine, you're fine. Yeah, it's, I think it's just a very hypothetical situation, so it might be-
Sure, sure.
-that we would have to review as an application.
But it would fit, agriculture uses would fit with that, not mixing the zoning?
Potentially. I think that agriculture is kind of one of those uses that just gets treated differently. It has more protections, it's valuable on a state level as well. So, but I, what I think is more where you're going to see something like this is if it's a commercial business that's operating brick and mortar.
People can come and buy vegetables.
Right.
Okay, okay.
That, that I think is the idea of that you're not supposed to-
Mix.
That's, yeah, you're not supposed to mix that without it being something you've already designated as something you, like a mixed residential, or no, sorry, a mixed-use district.
Okay.
But yeah, if we're talking about a single-family home residential district, there are very limited uses. And I just tried to use a bakery as an example of a commercial use, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
In PUDs, isn't there a, isn't there requirements that the, that is, the burden of proof is upon the applicant to show that a PUD would be the only way a property or a development could be achieved? No?
No, I, I, the, the idea is there should be negotiation between the city and the developer, and the idea is that there should be some benefit to the city beyond street zoning. There is really no, it's not like a variance where there's a burden of proof showing that they wouldn't be able to develop otherwise.
But a PUD should provide benefits to the city and users not obtained through straight zoning.
Correct. So, again, a lot of that usually ties back to preservation of natural resources. We don't have a tree preservation ordinance, so we use that a lot of the time when a PUD comes in front of us, we try to get them to preserve as much trees as possible, and that's kind of a way we get around not having a tree preservation ordinance while still getting the same goal.
All right, thanks.
There, she pulled up, oh, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just saying, good question.
Kendra pulled up the court case Euclid versus Ambler Realty to answer one of your early questions, Mr. Chair.
It's not necessary.
Oh, well, just the facts around the case, I think it is interesting. The village council passed a zoning ordinance dividing into several districts. Ambler Realty's lands span multiple districts and the company was therefore restricted in the types of buildings it could construct, so they filed a suit against the village claiming that their 14th Amendment right was violated. And a federal district court agreed and issued an injunction against enforcement of the ordinance. This obviously went to the Supreme Court where it was determined that the city's police powers overruled the 14th Amendment, or any violation of the 14th Amendment. So, again, the, the interest of the private property was, or sorry, the interest of the private rights did not outweigh the interest of the community. So, that's basically what we were talking about when we were saying police powers.
So, we'll lose to the Met Council at every turn?
Um.
You don't have to answer that question.
Yeah. I suppose I can't say everything. I don't know exactly how a court would decide the specific case that is in front of us, but the, the Metropolitan Council does have authority established and enabled with the state of Minnesota.
And you did say that's, that powers get delegated from the state level anyway, so if they delegate to them, then, then you would kind of apply to it.
Right, so it's state, Met Council, county, us. So, we, we have several people that, or several agencies that we answer to. We also answer to our watershed district. So, it's, yeah, it's, we don't have complete authority, but we do have discretion in some areas, yes. Any other questions? Feel free to email me if anything comes up. I am happy to look into it. I'll look into the ex parte communication question.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. I don't need anything. I'm just, I just want some clarifying.
Yeah, and I'm happy to provide it. I, I, well, I like to think I'm an expert on this. I don't know everything, and I will admit to that.
No one does.
But I prepared a game of Jeopardy to try to make this a little fun for you guys. So, you each have a buzzer. There are no teams, so you're each going to just play your own. You'll have to bear with me, because I don't know which sound, they each have a different sound, I don't know which one is assigned to who. So, buzz.
Buzz it, buzz it.
It was the fun day at City Hall when I had to install the batteries on me.
Also, I just really have to say that the amount of breath that you have expelled in the last hour, being like, you know, it takes a lot, like you guys don't understand that, your breath runs short, so I'm impressed, all that to say.
Thank you. I tried to minimize the ums, but it's a very long presentation.
You got it, like-
Put them all out. Anyway, so, I think you have to go to the next screen. So, I think we'll just go ahead and start with the chair. Go ahead and choose a category and number, and we'll go from there.
We'll take procedures.
Procedures.
For 200.
So, you just, it should just be able to click on it and it's a link. So, this law requires meetings of governmental bodies. All right, who did it? Okay. Go ahead.
Open public clause?
Perfect. All right, and you can go ahead and pick the next one.
I gotta go back to the first slide.
So, you should be back to the board link, yep.
I'm, I'm gonna go for the fences. Give me double jeopardy for 2,000. I'm gonna, that's right, we don't mess around here.
I'm sorry, Minnesota court, okay.
Hoyle.
V.
Hoyle v. City of Minneapolis.
So.
Good, answer in the form of a question.
Yes. Versus City of Minneapolis. Nice, let's answer the question.
I don't watch TV.
I always wanted to give it to you, because you were so close, but it was Hoyt versus Minneapolis, very, 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 very-
Oh, I thought he said that. Isn't that what he said?
He said Hoyle.
Oh, Hoyle.
Very, very close.
Dude, you're so close.
Does Corinne get 2,000 then?
Yeah, Corinne gets 2,000, I think.
Oh.
See, what, see, you're winning.
Let's go historical background for 1,000.
Or 400, okay, yeah.
You can't look at notes.
You can't look at your notes.
See, I was notes. I, I know this one, I just can't remember the darn name of the thing.
I say look at your notes, okay, don't look at your notes.
Look at your notes, usual.
Don't look at your notes. I don't remember.
It has slides in Village or something.
Do, 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 do. Do, 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 do. Jaspersen.
Is there a timer?
Versus the town of Zimmerman.
You think it was a-
No.
City of Euclid versus Ambler?
Oh, my God, that is so close. I think we can give that one, yeah. It was Euclid versus Ambler.
Well, he was close too, ear buzzer, ear buzzer.
That's true. I really feel like you should take your 2,000 points back.
No, that's okay.
You get to pick.
Oh, historical background for 200, please.
What is the Black Plague?
Thank you, yeah.
In Europe.
All right, and it's your turn again to pick.
And then go with a historical background for 400.
What is police powers?
Yep, and it's your turn to choose then.
I will go with double jeopardy for 1,600.
I'm like, what is our-
What is true?
No, I'm gonna give you that because I took out a couple of slides that went over our community vision, because I was trying to keep it at 45 minutes.
Well, true, it's also a-
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds like a vision, sounds like a vision statement.
This, yeah, this is our vision statement, so yeah, I, I'm gonna give you that one. Yeah.
It is our mission statement.
So, it is a true.
It's true.
It is true.
Thank you, Alex. I'll take double jeopardy for 1,200, please.
Close.
No, okay.
Very close.
We used to call it that.
Yeah. It's another way of saying that.
I'm close.
Well, I can't buzz in again, guys. You're gonna have to think of all the synonyms you know related to hardship.
Economic hardship?
No, that, remember, economic hardship does not constitute this standard.
Yeah, well.
Alone, anyways.
I would give you hardship, because until 2009, that's what we called this.
Okay. Well, then we can do that. It's practical difficulty.
Practical difficulty. I was like hardship difficulty, but practical difficulty.
But yeah, I think that is another way, especially in our staff presentations, we probably say hardship as another like synonym of it, so.
Okay, let's do historical background for 600.
I think it's a police one.
What is England?
Yep. You're on the board.
Historical background for 800. What is New York City?
Nice.
Nice.
Hey, you get to choose again.
Planning basics for 200, please.
What is planning commission?
Yep.
And they're wrong. I'll just, I'll just stick with it, planning basics for 400.
What is a comprehensive plan?
Nice.
Comp plan, yeah. Now, we'll go, let's go to the planning basics for 800.
What is legislative?
You know, I've stumped myself. One second. I think you're in great, oh.
That's not what your answer is.
No, the answer, you're on the right track, but that is not the right answer.
Okay.
What is quasi judicial?
Nice, there you go.
Thank you. Oh, planning basics for 600.
Well, I'm gonna just throw it in there. What are zoning ordinances?
Close, there's one more.
And subdivision ordinance.
All right, there you go.
I suppose you do have the plural form up there, I should have. And what's planning basics for 1,000?
Oh, I took this one out too.
You didn't even have the answer there, what is the answer there?
I would guess.
I don't know the answer to this one.
So, E.K. Schumacher said that the way society uses land is a pretty simple way to see what, or to determine its future. So, I apologize, I, like I said, I'm just trying to-
I think that's an important quote.
Get it cut down.
Print it off and hang it up on the wall.
Yeah. Why don't you go ahead and choose another? So why don't you go ahead and choose another one?
Um, let's do procedures for 400.
What is, uh, uh, what's, rules of procedure? I forgot his name.
Really close. There's another way to say it too, if you want. That would, I would accept.
I can't remember.
What are Roberts' rules?
Roberts' rules.
Yes, yep.
Yep.
Let's do applications for 400.
One or two?
Oh, applications one.
We did our music. Get that on our phone.
So it goes, oh, hey.
What is exemption?
Nope. It goes back to our discussion about the bakery that helps.
What is conditional use?
Nope, because it, this is what, when we're talking, oh, shit.
What is mixed zoning?
No.
No.
No, that, all those things we do. This is something we should try to avoid as a city.
Well, I would say PUD.
So, um, let's see, what clue can I give you?
Well, if you let us go through our notes.
How many times do we, do we zone a single piece of property?
Oh, people want to do it at times, especially once you're a completely developed city. I, it came up at Brooklyn Park quite a bit. Yeah. So basically, we're talking about a parcel in the middle of a residential development that has, that does not have access to major roads. It would be called, how can I say it?
Landlocked?
No.
Outlaw?
No.
Gun range?
The, should I just go with the answer?
Yeah.
All right, the answer is spot zoning. We want to work with spot zoning.
So applications one for 600.
There you go.
A zoning map ordinance change?
Mm-hmm, that's exactly it. Rzoning would also be another way to say it, too.
Uh, applications for 600. A condition.
What is a PUD?
I can see how you would get there, but no.
Okay.
A conditional use permit application?
No, so this is when someone can't meet the, has a practical difficulty and can't meet the.
What is a variance?
There you go.
Uh, let's do procedures for 600.
What is 60 days?
Yes, yep. 60-day rule.
Well, procedures for 800.
What is a PUD? What is the process for a PUD?
Nice, yep.
Applications 400.
An interim use permit.
Mm-hmm, nice.
I'm like, what's the last one? Do procedures for 1,000. Oh, shoot. What is a preliminary plat?
You got it, yep.
Uh, applications one for 200. What is the comprehensive review plan, the zoning ordinances, and the subdivision ordinances?
Extra word in there, but yes.
Sorry.
You got it right.
Um, applications for, one for 800.
What is the preliminary plat?
Mm-hmm, yep.
And applications one for 1,000.
What is preliminary plat? No, okay.
What is a conditional use?
Yeah, nice.
Good me.
Good job, Alex.
Yes. Uh, applications two for 200.
This is the yellow area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Apparently this one's harder than 200. I apologize.
Yellow area doesn't count. What is the yellow area on the triangle?
No, but I'll let you know, I printed off the slides for a reason, so if you want to take a quick look. It's not cheating.
Oh, you're saying we can use our notes?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, I thought that was clear.
While doing it from memory here, because they were like, don't, okay, no.
There you go. Wow, there's no way. What are variances, conditional use permits, and subdivision applications?
Correct, yep.
Hmm, that went to, that went to Kame. Applications two for 800. Okay, notes are allowed.
An interim use?
Correct, yep.
Double jeopardy for 800. A PUD application.
Correct, yep.
Uh, we'll go with applications two for 1,000. No, it's the same answer.
I'm going to say, what is a PUD?
He technically ran the buzzer, but yes, I was correct. I didn't expect you to do one of those two.
There's only one left.
Yep.
What is the Industrial Revolution?
Nice, yep. All right, we'll see who the winner is, and then we can take a break.
Well, it's going to be one of the newbies, I can tell you that.
Yeah, you can.
You're buzzing away.
Not competitive at all.
No.
No final jeopardy?
No, I'm sorry. This is my first time making a jeopardy board.
You did a good job. Get all, all the links worked.
Yeah, it took a little bit of time. It was just like, I'm spending way too much time on this. They better like it.
I liked it more than I thought I would.
So this, this is an app? This is an app that you downloaded?
No, it's PowerPoint.
It's in PowerPoint?
I made it in PowerPoint, yeah.
Oh.
It's just relinking back and forth?
It took a lot of time.
Way to go.
And I'm like, and I made this back in July, and I'm like, I still have to practice my presentation.
That's funny. And we're ahead of schedule, see?
Yeah, no, we'll.
All that stress.
Break. No, I know, I just wanted to try to get through it, because it was already a long presentation, so. But if you have any questions, feel free to bring them up now, or contact me, and I'll be happy to look into it.
Well, now that you're allowing more questions, this is one that maybe doesn't.
Sure.
Apply, but, but I'm, it's out of curiosity. So by the time you get to the application for a PUD, has the land purchase already been made?
Sometimes.
Okay.
Sometimes, usually there's at least a purchase agreement in place.
Okay.
I know.
That may or may not fall through depending on the city's decision.
Correct, and then I know of situations where the land purchase has gone through, and the developer is now the property owner. So it, I don't want to name any specifics, because I just don't know how much is public information. But yeah, I think at the very least, there's a purchase agreement in place.
Well, drum roll, Corinne is our big winner.
600 points.
Fair prize.
No, I'm going to print off a certificate for you, but I forgot about it.
Please don't. I was totally kidding.
But, but you win at planning, so, if that helps.
Answering questions, that's not planning.
And just, I think there are some things Dean made, I just wanted to comment. We have a home occupation or accessory dwelling unit ordinance that was written a long time ago when Lauren was our chair. Dean, do you remember when Lauren Conan was your chair? And there was a real reluctance to allow it at all. And so we have a lot of things that are, A, very restrictive. I think in the world that we live in today, the accessory dwelling units are something that certainly I think people are interested in more. And at the time, they intentionally did it through an interim use permit. I don't disagree with you, though, that that has some inherent challenges, because it's harder to tell when somebody sells the property, right? We don't get noticed.
Well, you know, George, George wrote a small dissertation when we considered those in full support of it, and he makes very good points, and.
Right.
Heck, I even thought about it myself. I thought, well, why don't I just go ahead and build a building on back of my yard and sell my house to my daughter? I don't want to get into these things again, but I thought, but, but how does this, but how does this?
We adjourn to the.
Can we adjourn, and then we can?
Oh, sure.
Sorry.
I apologize.
This is adjourned. But I mean, in, in today's world, I, yes, there's, but it just, I mean, when I drove by that place, again, I knew what to expect, but I mean, you don't.